Okay, good evening and welcome to the Cottontide City Council Business Meeting. Today's August 2nd, 2022. My name is Mayor Mike Wickers. I have asked our council member Ellen Burrell to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight to get started. Thank you, Councilmember Burrell. Item 3.0 on our agenda is a citizen comment period. This is a time for citizens to address the council concerning matters they desire. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please review the public comment procedures on the last page of the agenda. If you haven't already filled out a speaker comment card, please do so and hand it to a staff member. When making citizen comments, we request that you speak into the microphone so that your comments can be recorded. You give your name and that you avoid insulting language. The audience should avoid expressions of support or disagreement such as clapping or hissing. So the speakers can feel like they can safely express their thoughts. Council is here to listen, but you shouldn't expect to engage in a back and forth dialogue. If you raise questions, staff will respond to you within a few minutes. Business days, discuss your questions. The first comment card that I have here tonight, Ira Russell Boyer. So Ira, come up to the microphone. Yep, then we can hear you.
There you go. That better?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm in District 1. I'm Doug Peterson's, my councilman. What I'm really interested in, and I hope I'm not too late to get involved, but it's this. The Community Renewable Energy Agency. And how Cottonwood Heights is involved in it. A little bit of background on me, I'm a retired electrical engineer in power systems. I consulted for Murray City Power, Utah Power, and I, who's now, of course, Pacific Corp, but other municipal. So I do know something about utilities. I'm not versed in utility rates, but I would like to be. And if we have here in the council or in the city, something going on or meetings and groups, I'd like to be involved at least to be there and listen. And if there's any volunteer needed, I'd like to volunteer for it. So that's my, that's what I'd like to say.
Well, yeah, thank you, Ira. We appreciate that. And there's nothing better than citizens that want to be involved and engaged. So thank you. And we have your contact information, it looks like. And we will be in touch if we can get you involved. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person is Tim Howick. Pronounce that Hall and not Hal.
Yes, thank you for doing it right. The first time in six years. All right.
And you actually signed that it's Tim this time and not?
That's true. Exactly. So hello, it's been a while. City Council, Mayor George Lucas, how you doing? Tell me I'm wrong. Oh, I was just gonna talk about the roundabout, but I wanted to reinforce what councilperson Burrell said earlier. You know, doing a study about peak traffic during snow season, two months after snow season is nuts. It's just, it's crazy. I don't, I don't know how that happened. And I have a, I have a joke to go with that. So I ate a clock this weekend and it was very time consuming. But it was very tasty, so I went back for seconds. It went straight here. You could call it a waste of time, which is exactly what happens when you have a study that's done two months after. See what I did there? Trying to bring things together. All right. As far as the roundabout, I don't know if you know, I spent a couple of weeks in Ireland recently. And there are similar things to this. They, but I don't see all the things that we have planned, what they've already implemented. For example, there's a three-way system. There's pedestrian traffic, there's light rail traffic, and there's all the cars and buses and normal things. What happens during normal times of the day, when the students are present? All the pedestrian lights, excuse me, all the stoplights go red. Oh, by the way, there's a stoplight for every single entrance, not on the exits, just on the entrance. All the stoplights go red, the pedestrians go for about two, three minutes, the light rail goes, and then all the cars go. There's never a time when pedestrians and cars are taking turns going through things at different parts of the intersection. And I don't recall seeing on the plan for our roundabout, having an always-stop type of mechanism. That it was, here's the roundabout, here are the crosswalks, and maybe there are some crossing lights, but not regular red, yellow, green stoplights. And that's standard throughout the country. I went from Dingle to Cork to Dublin to Galway, everywhere it's the same. And everywhere there's a school crossing, anywhere near a roundabout, there's a crossing guard. And it is absolutely, you know, with the full Bobby outfit and the whistle and the flag. And it's, and it's accompanied, whether it's high school, junior high, elementary, didn't matter. So although I'm against the concept of roundabout here, especially next to a school, other places have compensated for that. And they do that with always stops, and they do that with crossing guards. And so I hope that we're, we have that in our plan as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. And we will follow up with you if that's okay. Tim, anything that you wanted to say? The next person is David Berry.
Hello, my name's David Berry at 2295 Laredo Way, District 2. And I'm commenting on the sleds, the riparian part of the sleds. I have learned about this and have been given some information. I believe on the 20th, I was emailed information, 20th of July. Apparently that was right after the comment period closed. Like a day later, I think, after I received the information, the day after. I'm asking because I have very, very strong concerns, as I think many people along the creeks will, that the, right, at least the riparian, I suppose all of sleds, if it affects landowners, we should receive direct notice. If someone's gonna build somewhere next to us, they're required to get to notify their neighbors of a hearing on the matter. They're required to do that. These sleds issues are affecting homeowners, especially the riparian owners here. And we deserve direct notice. Now, I've been told that's too expensive. It's 100, sleds is 180 pages long. Well, if it's too expensive, don't do it. If you can't do it in less than 180 pages, don't do it. Or you notify us and you find some way to notify the neighborhoods. And you can do that. You could put little posters in front of the neighborhoods. You can notify the HOAs, because most of the people along the creeks belong to HOAs, probably 70% of us. I don't even care if you notify the local wards. By the way, I'm not LDS, but the word would at least get out. It's not gotten out. People at least in my neighborhood and across the creek from me don't know about it. And some of this stuff is, in my opinion, just so onerous. Those rocks in the creek, a lot of them were placed by Salt Lake County. And these documents say that we could maintain, but we would have to pay, go get an engineering study. And you can't use heavy equipment or even mechanized equipment. Do you know most of those rocks placed by the county are way over a ton? You think a crew of individual people are gonna be able to go through there and move and restack those rocks? Finally, those creeks are not static. They are dynamic. They are downcutting. In our neighborhood, they have downcut over six feet, almost seven and a half feet, actually. I measured it the other day. That means those rock walls have to be replaced and maintained because they are undercut and it protects our homes, especially my home. It's right on a right angle bend. These things just aren't workable the way they are. They're just not workable. Heck, under these, we can't even fertilize our grass. I mean, this is ridiculous. In order to cut down a dead tree, you have to go, we have to go and get a certified arborist to tell us it's dead. If we wanna cut down branches and trees. If you live along the creek, you know that we probably get 30 new starts a day. Not a day, a summer of trees. Everything from Chinese elms to ashes to black walnuts to, you name it. We've got to be able to maintain and not, not do some engineering study to clean out brush. Please, we need to reopen the comment period after actual publication and notice to people. If you guys don't wanna give notice, then don't do it. Please reopen the comment period.
Thank you. Just so you know, the public comment period is still currently open through tomorrow's Planning Commission meeting.
I received an email saying that.
I can clarify, and I think the council has copied on an email. The Planning Commission closed the formal public hearing for this item after it's been at every meeting since January. That being said, it all comes to the city council. And every city council meeting, public comment is open and public hearing can be made. I've also committed to Mr. Berry, when the council has copied on this, that this will be published in the citywide newsletter in September, so.
Not in its entire. Not in the newsletter?
Not the entire ordinance, no. But a summary of what it is and what it entails and what it affects and how to be involved.
Study itself will be on the website, available for download.
Mr. Berry will engage with you.
Comment on that?
Oh, absolutely.
In the newsletter to tell people what you're not telling them.
So Mr. Berry will engage with you as well this week with the staff, okay?
We actually already have an appointment set up, so.
So we're not gonna advise the Planning Commission to reopen the comment period after notice is actually given to Creekside owners?
We'll have a conversation, Mr. Berry.
Well, no, that's a council decision. That's not your decision, Mr. Tingey. It's the council's decision when they want that reopened.
Mayor, there is going to be, as Mike Johnson just mentioned, there is still public comment that will occur through the whole process through the council. So the public comment period will be available for the public from here on until the council makes a decision.
There will still be a public hearing.
Public hearing is what was closed, correct, Mike?
For the council, right?
Planning Commission is in charge of the public hearing.
There've been like six months of public hearing open in front of the Planning Commission. We've received, I don't know, hundreds of comments at this point from members of the public that have been engaged. The same process will take place when the commission makes a recommendation to the council before the council makes any final consideration of anything.
Mayor, I'd just like to make one comment. I, I, I think it's a valid point that Mr. Berry is making that our city could do more to reach out to affected residents. And I think that all of those creative, well, they may be commonplace in other cities, but that kind of creative thinking of how you can reach affected residents through posting signs and, and even reaching out, you know, with a door-to-door hanger. Or I would like to see more of that sort of thing because I hear this a lot in my district. There's a lot of people that are very ill-informed and it's a challenge in our modern-day life. You think in the info technology age that we have more abundant information, but people, the reality is they're so barraged that I think we need to do even more with physically reaching out into neighborhoods that are affected. That's my thought.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we have John Adams online who has his hand raised. John, you're on mute, it looks like.
How about that? Is that better?
That's better.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, thanks for your time. John Adams, I'm in, I'm in District 4. Back in April, I had submitted kind of a overview of perspectives on growth that Councilwoman Burrell was kind enough to put on her website. I'm hoping some had a chance to read it or whatnot, but I'm kinda going off that theme a little bit. This tied back to your meeting earlier today regarding the community-focused study. Along the lines of that study, I think would be remiss if we neglected concerns from Utahns that we're seeing from other surveys, where many are starting to question old paradigms around growth. Questions like, can we grow unlimited? And do we get to a point where we have so much that more growth actually begins to deteriorate the quality of life? It sounds like that Cottonwood Heights survey has already gone out. I think it went to randomly selected people. And you guys have the results from that. And I heard you were looking maybe to further focus, focus surveys on specific topics. Some of the topics I heard come up in the meeting earlier were things like land use, zero growth, mobility, public safety, public engagement, things like that. And what I just wanna throw out is you guys choose topics you want for those focused surveys. I believe, and I think someone brought it up in the meeting, but I believe you need to add more background for the citizens that will be asked those questions. You know, typical questions could be, how should we do this? Or what do you want to see? And specifically, the background I would include are things that would get to the core purpose of a project you're asking the questions on. Where the project initiates from and who it benefits. Ellen was just mentioning how we don't all get the information we need. I think the onus is on the citizens to, you guys make those things public. Or, you know, you put them out there. I think the onus on the citizens a little bit, or a lot a bit, to dig into those. So I think we've seen this play out horribly in the games and politics around, like, for instance, a little cottonwood EIS. Nobody trusts the process because the core purpose and the beneficiaries of that project specifically were not out in the open. I'm not gonna talk about that project, but we don't need that in our city, you know, as we do our planning. So I asked two things. I asked, as you formulate the questions for those focused surveys that we focus on openness and accountability to help guide the ultimate questions that will go into those surveys. And additionally, maybe consider a separate, a separate topical survey to get to the root concerns people have around the growth. And the purpose of that more to find, uncover common values we have that can try to eliminate some of the polarization because growth is a very polarizing topic. Some people want growth at any cost because they're in the business. Some people think we should not have growth at all. I don't think that's the approach. I think we all have common values. And I don't know if there's a way to survey off that as well. Anyway, thanks for your time and thanks for what you all do.
Thank you, John. I appreciate your comments. Those are very concise. So I do not see any other comments at this time, so I will go ahead.
Mayor, I did have one online, online comment. If I may just read this. This is from Dr. Emil Platon. The address is 7470 South. Anyway, the address is here. And there, and this person's from Cottonwood Heights. This person states, there's a stop sign at the intersection of Brighton Point and 3500 East as one drives westwards. Absolutely no driver commits to a full stop at this intersection as required by the traffic law. Furthermore, more and more drivers are coming down the hill quite fast. Neighbors, contractors with big trucks and trailers race through the turn, increasing the possibility of an accident that may result in someone being injured or property damage. Something needs to be done. So we'll follow up with this individual as well, but this was a public comment that they requested be part of the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Tim. With that, I'll close the citizen comment period. We will now move to item 4.0, a public hearing. Item 4.0 is actually a continuation of a public hearing from our July 19th meeting for item 4.1, in which we will open to the public for comments regarding a proposed amendment of compensation for the city's elective and statutory officers. I'll have our city manager, Tim Tingey, give us a little bit of background.
Yeah, just to reiterate what I discussed at the last council meeting, when you opened the public comment period, we did a process of evaluating a market of both, of elected officials regarding their pay. The last time that there was an adjustment per ordinance was in 2013. We evaluated other cities, looked at cities that were comparable with the type of government that we have, which includes a part-time mayor and a part-time council, and looked at the market primarily here in the Salt Lake Valley and looked at ranges and the proposal that you have in front of you as part of the ordinance is to have the compensation go close to midpoint, a little bit below average. And that's what's being proposed tonight. And so it's based on a market study and evaluation. It was also based on discussions through our budget meetings as well, last, last budget year. And so that's what's prompted this, and we're recommending approval of the ordinance that's been posted now for a few weeks.
Great. Thank you, Tim. I do not currently have any comment cards or see anybody online with their hand raised. So having said that, I will now close the public hearing for item 4.1, Proposed Amendment, amended compensation schedule for the city's elected and appointed office. We'll now move to our 5.0 staff quarterly reports. The first item will be 5.1, a police report from our police lieutenant, Dan Bartlett.
Good evening. If you could just give me a second to get this thing up and going. Okay, it's our July stats report. The month of July, we had 1,473 calls for service, which is not unusual for us in the month of July. We're very busy with fireworks calls and whatnot, so we're not surprised that that, that that number rose and it's very typical. We had 224 on-view cases. And there's our calls per district, as you can see, which is also very typical for us. Our our average response times here. We're about at the six-minute mark for total response time on party one, which is about right. What we've seen since we moved over, everybody's moved over to the, to the, to the versus term model. I don't know that that's gonna change dramatically. I think we're about set with the, with their, with the two-minute call time and our standard three-and-a-half to four-minute response time. One call did throw this, this off a little bit. It, as they, as they do, we don't wanna reverse that out. I mean, three and a half, three, about 3:15 to four minutes of travel time is about right for us on, in the city here with as populated as it is. So, you know, one call that takes a little bit longer during rush hour or something like that can kinda throw it off. So that, that's about five and a half minutes, six minutes is about where we're gonna be at with, under the versus term model that we have now.
How do you classify the priority calls?
So a priority one call would be like a robbery or burglary, traffic accident with injury, those, those that require immediate response from us that we would run code license hiring to. Two, like, priority two calls would be, so your, your priority one would be in-progress calls. Your priority two would be serious calls that we're gonna respond to that are not in progress, that would require immediate response. And a priority three would be, my car got broken into a couple of days ago, and I just wanna call and get a report. And then we have lower ones beyond that, some animal patrol calls, things like that. But those are the three we kinda, that we kinda stack our response times on that are important to us. Our overall UCR crime view for the month, 72, which again is, is pretty typical for the month of July. Arrests for the month, 41 arrests, adult arrests, and this was the interesting thing, zero juvenile arrests for the month of July for us. That is a little strange. Yeah, I found that was really interesting. Yeah. So no, no juvenile arrest for the month of July is interesting. Our total traffic citations for the month, and then our DUIs, which I also thought was kinda low for us, for DUIs for the month of July. Citations by district.
Doug always stands out, stands tall.
I wanna point out, the District 1 was very low on crime, but it seems like we've had a few citations. Is that right?
Yes, you have.
I'm gonna blame that on the mayor. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Our accidents for the month of July, we had 26 accidents, eight injury accidents, and one fatal accident in the month of July.
Dan, I wanna point out that real quick, just, we, the fatal accident we had was a medical. Is that the one it was?
Yes, sir.
It was sad, but I guess he passed out or something.
Yes, sir.
And it was not far from where I live. And it, parents called and said that they were very grateful the way it was handled. And my parents had an incident where their mailbox got attacked by somebody that also passed out. And he had a diabetic situation where low blood sugar. And luckily, that resident, the mailbox that my parents built so sturdily stopped his vehicle from going through many other. So it's the Hero mailbox, we call it now.
Yeah.
But we wanna thank you the way that you, you handled that as well. Thanks so much.
Well, these are never easy and unfortunately, you know, it was, it was a medical incident that happened prior to the traffic accident. But, but again, it was a fatal accident and, and the family, you know, our heart glout to the family, and these are always hard to work. And this was in the middle of the day on a very busy road. And so getting through this and working them through it and, and, you know, hit a sandy utility. And so, you know, we had to work with them as well, just getting these things done. Requires a lot of work and a lot of follow-up, but we got that done and I'm grateful that they, that they felt that way. So thank you.
May I ask a clarifying question on accidents where you differentiate between property damage and injury? I obviously understand injury as to people. But with property damages, that's strictly the damage to their car? Or does that infer that there was, you know, literal property, like the car went off the road and ran into?
No, it would be, it would be any damaged property, whether it's a vehicle or a fence or a mailbox or, or a residence or a building. It would be any, anything that required, when we fill all the forms out, when we do all the forms, it asks if there's any property damage. We go and fill that out. And then it classifies it different if there's personal injury. So that's why all of the, the traffic accidents will be classified under property damage.
And are you finding this year, this summer, this July compared to past Julies, are those property damage numbers going up or is it static? How does it compare?
You know what? It's actually pretty normal. This is very, very normal for us. And, and then the month of July, I mean, people don't, I just passed one on my way back to the office, right? People don't, you know, are not paying attention on a cell phone, something like that. We get a lot of those. But the, the bad weather accidents, we're not getting in the month of July, right? The snow, sleet, rain, or whatever, we, you know, we really aren't seeing those in the month of July. This is, but this is very typical.
And in your accident reports, do, does the officer or does the police department attribute the, the main cause of the accident? I mean, you mentioned distracted drivers. Is it, is it, could there be a distinction that? I mean, you mentioned distracted drivers. Is it is it all, uh, could there be a distinction that it was a distracted driver driving too fast? I mean, you know, i- in terms of getting a handle on whether speed is related to higher uh injury and?
Yes, uh, there's fifty million things that go into a traffic accident report, and to the best of our ability, if we can attribute speed uh to an accident. And we and speed is the cause, you know, for the accident, we will say that if it's uh distracted driving, driving impaired, any of those things, you know, faulty equipment, all of that stuff. Goes into the accident form, um and we can we can kick out all that data.
I assume a combination of those.
Or a combination of those, yes.
Determine that.
Yes, if we can determine it, right? And if some of that goes to the driver or witnesses and and what we can tell when we get on scene.
Thank you.
Our animal control and code enforcement, uh hundred and fifty-four total calls for service, our animal control and code enforcement are very, very busy. They're handling about a hundred calls, um a hundred cases a month where they are are doing things and have to follow up on those cases. And they, you know, continue on and on and on, so they're extremely busy. We're working through a lot of the summer brings a lot of animal calls and it brings a lot of code calls. Um, you know, we had uh uh one of our code enforcement officers on the news the other day for wrangling snakes, which is something that uh. Something that um that they've they've taken up and and then started to do, so, you know, we're, it's that time of year for us where the weeds are high. And the fire danger is high and um and people are calling about, you know, code violations and also animal violations. So they're extremely busy and we're we're getting done what we can with our two people. Here's our last three months uh in review for you guys. Um, as you can see, uh, you know, July is busy for us with calls for service and we kind of ramp up and then school year starts and we. Ramp back down until we get to Christmas, and so we wanted you guys to be able to see that. Uh, the last month, we had one attended and three unattended deaths. Here's our property crimes uh heat map for the month of July.
Is the is the is the bicycle theft still as as kind of rampant as it was a few months ago? Or are you getting any statistics that way?
We've had a couple of. Burglaries uh from our bicycle uh shops and and so we've lost some high-dollar bikes that we're we're currently working on cases, trying to to get that figured out. Um, but the the bikes from yards has kind of tapered down and we've we've been dealing with those those high-dollar vehicle burglar or. Business burglaries at our at our little bike shop, so we're working on that right now. So if you looked at our total number of thefts of bikes for the month, it hasn't really gone down, but we had those, and so we're we're trying to figure out who that is.
Thank you.
Hey, Dan, on that hotspot.
Yes, sir.
And we mentioned, is it Target, Home Depot?
Yeah, the whole Union Park Center, right?
Old Union.
And and we know that the whole Union Park Center attributes to about the thirty percent of the call, total calls for service for this.
Have they changed their policy from allowing a theft up to what, four hundred dollars to walk out?
No, they haven't changed their policy, so, no.
You can say that, that's a specific. Store.
Yeah, one retailer doesn't call, doesn't call for the simple shoplifting now, right? If they do call for, uh, we do get calls for frauds and forgeries. Um, down there, but we don't get called for the for the shoplifting, so the shopliftings have gone significantly down in that in that area, right? In that in in that shopping center um for that one store that doesn't call us anymore, but uh the rest of them still do.
Thank you.
Uh huh. All citations uh on the heat map. As you can see, the places that we uh hit hard for the month, uh, right, the Union Park Center, um up High Wasatch and Fort Union and. Out on uh to Danish, doing some or on on Highland Drive and that area cutting up through Danish, trying to get some some red light. Or some stop sign and some speed violations taken care of. Uh, last month.
Amazing how well that corresponds to traffic counts.
I'm sorry?
That map you had up?
Yeah.
You can predict a pretty strong correlation between the number of cars on.
Absolutely, right? Absolutely. Uh, last month, we were uh Sergeant Tizoid uh set us up with a wonderful event that we hosted here um with uh. The U F A and the the Autism Council for Utah, um we hosted uh uh families with autistic children. They came up, uh, we had a bunch of officers here, uh, the chief, the assistant chief and I were all here. Um, it was wonderful for us to sit down and meet with them and let them meet us and talk about what it is that we do and fire as well and 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 kind of get to know people in our community. And let them get to know us. We we really thought they would turned out great. We had a really high turnout. It was awesome, um and I wanted to share that with you guys.
Was it just for autistic?
This one, this one was for uh families with autistic children, so I mean, there were some adults mixed in there, which we're happy, we were happy. Yeah, absolutely. Our safety message for the month, uh, we're getting close. It's almost back to school time. Um, and this year with the roundabout um and and all the things we have going on. Um, we wanted to just give some back-to-school safety tips and uh remind everyone in the city that's listening or watching or looking at this later. Um, please slow down, uh, watch for these kids crossing the street. We will be back at it with our crosswalk enforcement. We will be back back at it with our speed enforcement and our parking enforcement like we are at the beginning uh of every single year. So please, please, um, we beg uh for everyone to slow down, watch for our children and let us figure out the best ways to get them to school. Any questions for me?
I was just saying, it make it make it made me very happy today to see that truck out over on the roundabout, because that's what's going to be slowing down the sidewalk implementation. So hopefully it won't be very long. They said they now still correct that they're going to have the asphalt portions of. The roundabout done hopefully before school started, but the sidewalks may be delayed another.
Absolutely, but roundabout or not, like, you know, we still have the rest of the stretch, right, that we've always had a problem with? And and so we were, we're just begging people right now to slow down and pay attention and and especially with our with our new uh traffic calming measure. Uh, to uh to to allow us some time to the kids and all the drivers to figure that out, and so we don't have any accidents.
I'd I'd like to just add to that. I'm so glad that you're ending your presentation on our back-to-school, our children. And I uh took some time with Councilman Bracken today. We spent a couple hours going to various uh spots uh in our two districts. Uh, related to traffic calming, um, and I want to really commend Councilman Brack and 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 all the staff that was involved in this roundabout. Uh, I know there's been a lot of confusion, uh, not all residents are excited about that roundabout. Uh, but I want to go on record as saying, uh, and I'm going to quote Councilman Bracken, if you know how to make a right-hand turn. You're going to do just fine on a roundabout. And the safety elements, because I've had a number of constituents ask me, they've said, you know, high school students like to walk in packs together. The sidewalks aren't nearly uh, you know, accommodate them, and there's been so much confusion and concern. Uh, I want you to know that after spending some time with Councilman Bracken today, I'm very enthused about this roundabout. I think it's makes our community safer. It uh it has very deliberate design to accommodate both bicyclists and pedestrians. And so if you have not familiarized yourself with that roundabout, I highly urge everyone uh to avail yourself of that. Uh, I suggested to the city staff that we do a few events that give the public a chance to really walk it and experience it hands-on. So appreciate what the C H P D does to keep our children safe, and I think we can continue to redesign our roadways to slow motorists down. And give all users of the roadway safety. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Lieutenant Bartlett. We uh we appreciate all that you do in your in your department. We'll talk a little bit here in a minute about all you did uh at Butlerville days, and so we appreciate the year, all the time that you gave us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on our on our list for our staff quarterly reports is our Public Works Director, Matt Ship.
Okay, Mayor and Council, I just want to give you an update, uh, what's been happening the last couple of months since we visited last. I caught a lot of pictures this time, so. We'll go through that and talk about a few of the projects that are that are going on. Um, first one I want to give you an update on is the Ferguson Canyon Park. Um, just to give you an overview of what it looks like. This is a part of. What will be on the sign down there, just FYI. There's a few more detailed park rules and that that will go on here, but just to give you an overall view. Of what the the park looks like and what we're getting ready to talk about. Just briefly, this is the area of the park that's up at the very top. It's the highest point on the park. Um, this was designed to stay in a natural state as much as possible. Um, but you'll see out here, there's pads, locations, there's benches where we can put them out there, so you can go up there and sit and enjoy the enjoy the views that are up there. Um, this is, looking at this, I, this is a dirty trail right now, but this is the asphalt. And you can see the fence along Wasatch that's going up that uh. To. Keep in the off-leash, um, keep the off-leash use going on this park. This up here is the entrance. It's not obviously not quite finished, but this will be the entrance into the park from the parking lot to give you some perspective. Um, and that's that's a closer view of it. So what it'll have is a double gate as you come in. Walk in, close the gate, can go through the other one, try to maintain a little control. There's more park benches, there's uh picnic tables and up in here, which I don't have on here yet, there'll be a restroom that'll be going in. Uh, just give you some idea of the progress that's happening, another uh fence, and this is in the other direction. Now, this portion of the trail you're looking at here is a crushed limestone. We have an asphalt trail that goes into a crushed limestone, kind of goes in the more native area and then then a soft fall trail that goes further into the native area. So there's three different types, and you can see the uh, this is the one of the junctions of the the crushed asphalt to the uh. To the asphalt trail. Um, these are some views. Once again, the native material to the crushed down to here, and you can see what's happening, kind of give you a little view from this point. And as an overall, this is the work so far that we've uh got completed. Those are the benches we talked about. This is the native area. Through here, the crushed asphalt and the trail, and then the entrance is right here. So just to give you an idea of where we are, we're we're there starting to do plantings right now. A lot of trees going in, uh shrubs and whatnot will be going in, and they'll be doing some seeding and finishing up on their uh. On their irrigation. Now, once again, just to remind the public, we have two projects here. One is the parking lot, which was a federal-funded project. It has not started yet. It is actually out to bid right now. Uh, we're waiting to see what the results are of that. Uh, there's some things going on there where they can start now or they can start later if the price isn't right, so we've kind of mixed some things in there. Uh, but this park in the next about a month, we should be to the point that, well. We're going to have to have some of these plantings. Taking, you know, taking hold, if you will. So we'll we'll make some decisions here on how much longer we want to keep it closed, but we should definitely have access to it later in the fall. From the the dirt parking lot if we don't start any construction. So that's the Ferguson Canyon Park and where we are on that. Uh, talk a little bit about the roundabout that came up, so we thought we'd go through that, show you some things that are happening. This is a picture that was taken a couple of weeks ago. Um, you can see the progress that's happening on the roundabout. And the things that are going in. There have been, this is.
There's a wide view, by the way, out this way.
Yeah, there's a good view over there, yeah. This was pre-construction, just to give you an idea as a reminder, twenty-three hundred, twenty-three, twenty-five and Bengal. The idea was connecting this road, these these three roads along with an access to the school. Now, there's been some questions about the school, just to remind everybody, when this started many years ago, there was discussion with the school and the schools on board. Making connection to the roundabout, and they actually designed their parking lot around this intersection when they came through. So all of these things happen in conjunction with one another, but you can see what it looked like prior to where we are right now. Um, there's been a few things I've been seeing about school crossings in the uh in the roundabout. We do have crossing at every leg of this roundabout with an R R F B or a rapid reflecting flashing beacon. That lets people know pedestrians are in the crosswalk, so you hit a button that flashes. You cross one lane, you go to a safety zone in the middle, and you cross the other, and on each one of those legs, you're actually facing the traffic as you walk. So you're crossing one leg of traffic as opposed to two as a pedestrian, so. Um, this to give you an idea of where those crosswalks are as pedestrians. Um, these, this green is the islands where where the safety, you can see the crosswalks on each one of these. Um, each one of these legs, the school, twenty-three, twenty-five, uh, Bengal Boulevard. Uh, twenty-three hundred and Bengal Boulevard, as well as the roundabout. Um, now, there's been some confusion that I've been seeing, or we've been getting a few nasty grams. Um, about how we pulled the crosswalks out of the roundabout. We have not pulled crosswalks out of the roundabout. They still exist. These are temporary crossings, and we'll talk a little bit right now about schedule. We have had a real problem with getting, well, we haven't, the contractor, getting enough co- concrete to. To get through the project. Uh, the school has seen it. Everybody's really running into it. At one point, they were only getting twelve yards a day, and that's a truck at the most that they're being able to get in. Um, lately, they've been pushing it, and they've been getting up to thirty yards, so they are moving forward. The curving and gutter is in all around it. We are at this point waiting for the vent pole from Rocky Mountain Power to be moved. Um, I'm told it's supposed to be removed this week. Once that's removed, we can slip the curb and move forward. Um. We. The asphalt will be in when school starts. As mentioned here this evening, there are some areas that won't have the sidewalk completed. That's why this is created, so, and this has been distributed. We worked with the school, the school district on creating this, and they have approved it and signed off on it. Because for the first about a week to two weeks, there's going to be temporary crossings for those students using it. They will be marked and shown, and the school has this, and they passed it out through their community as well. And I think this is where we are starting to get some of those calls about removing the crosswalks. They are in not the most convenient location, but they are in the safest location that we're able to put them in for the pedestrians. Okay? Um, give you another picture, a view of what's happening out here. Um, moving along well, it's a very clean sight. Um, the traffic has been absolutely, I know people who drive it probably don't think this, but it's been great. They've been able to move it in and out.
I drive it.
Yeah, they've been moving it in and out. It's it's little congestion, and they've been good about safety and keeping that thing moving, so. We're.
All meant that I wish there was two-way traffic down.
Well, we have to, we have to crack a few eggs to make an omelet here, so things are going to get messed up. Just to show you some of the progress that happened along the way. You have been moving, and like I said, here's the, here's an aerial of a couple of weeks ago of where we are, but right now this curving gutter is in. This corner is all torn out, and the curving gutter is in here, and there's that bent pole that we're trying to get uh. Get out of there, and once that's done, this roundabout can slip the curb the rest of the way and will move. So you can see the sidewalk on this side is completed. Um, that sidewalk is ten feet wide. Um, I I believe it's, it has quite a bit of space across for students who like to walk en masse, if you will. Can't make it much wider. If we do, we're almost creating a road.
That's such a great photo. Uh, is it possible to get that on our website? Uh, or and I'd love to get a copy of that. That's that is such a good bird's eye view of that. It's great.
Certainly can. Yes, we certainly can. Um, you can see the safety features we tried to add through this whole thing. You can see down here, it's kind of hard to tell, but. There's a fence right here to drive, if you will, four students to the crosswalk so they don't cheat and try to run it. You got to go through an obstacle to cheat to get across this roundabout. There's fencing along here. There's fencing over here, and there'll be the same over here, as well as in the center of the roundabout. There'll be fencing and landscaping to discourage.
Questions, so what type of landscaping are we putting in there?
Uh, zero scape as much as we can.
Pretty cacti and just sagebrush with thorns?
To whatever we can to keep them out of it, yes. Um, I don't have the plan sheet in front of me, or I'd tell you the exact plan.
And I and I don't know what the the plan is, but um. For the most part, because I did stand there and watch the egress from Butlerville Days on Saturday evening, and there were a lot of pedestrians. The vast majority saw that there was a sidewalk, even though it was dark. I'm expecting when the lights go on, that will be even more obvious. Were a couple stall. There were a couple stallwarts. I'm going to walk down the middle of the road.
Yeah.
And most of them weren't, that's the middle of the road. You may want to get on the sidewalk dead, but there were a couple of people who were a little more stubborn on that. So maybe, uh, if one of those guys were out there doing that, I don't, I hope that doesn't occur too much, but maybe a couple of
Hey Matt?
Yes.
I have seen the, the large fire truck go through that quite easily, Riley.
Ladder truck went through the other day and
Yeah, went through smoothly. I've been on it a number of times. It's been wonderful. I know it's just partially constructed, but water, I imagine water and electricity is in the, in the middle
Yes.
of, of the, uh, I, I look forward to seeing, this is
I, let me back up on power. I'm not sure about
Water?
Water isn't, yes.
But you will have electricity in there for any lighting or not?
Uh, we don't have, I, I'm, I need to check to see if we do have power or at least conduits running to the center. I think we do. Uh, but yes, there's water for the, for the center island.
That current westbound traffic asphalt will be removed?
Here? Or, oh, here?
Yeah, the
Yeah, this, this is temporary to that comes out, there will actually be a mount, there'll be stamped concrete on a port about six feet wide. In other words, an apron that for the larger trucks like we, when we worked with the fire department, they wanted to make sure that they
Fire department can do it. It's the coke trucks.
Get the, uh, and then it's built for larger truck, tractor trailers.
Those, those guys who don't drive quite as well or decide that they're gonna go down 2030 east regardless of which way the arrows point.
So, yes. But we'll get, we'll get the photo on the website, um, share that. Any questions about the roundabout right now? Good? Okay, uh, real quick, just briefly tell you about the Alta Hills Storm Drain. This thing has been a once again, go back to supply. It's taken up to eight months to get pipe to put in here that the storm drain is in. They will be paving this, yeah. So it's been sitting open for quite a few months. Um, when we did Scottish, uh, Scottish that, that's when we discovered this. So this giving you an idea of the pipe, it was the storm drain line. You can see this was what it was under the road. There is no pipe right here. No pipe here and this is all corroded. That's what the entire pipe looked like under the road. It's been replaced. And so that's why we did this storm drain project and you can see this is actually filled to this point right here. So there's about six inches above that debris that allowed whatever flow could get through. The other reason we had to change this pipe out, just didn't get it. So just a quick view of the, where we are. And this is the Alta Hills. New storm drain inlets, uh, meeting our standards of double inlets at all low points. So we can take as much water off the surface as we can. Uh, fire
May I ask one thing? I'm so sorry, but, uh, so there's, so the recent incident where there was the pipe burst. The, I, I was under the impression that was a freshwater, you know, wa- water pipe that was burst. That happened about a couple of weeks ago, but that's completely different than
Oh, this is the, yeah, this
So, so where was the location of that?
It was north, south of this project. It's right at the, roughly the bend on Danish Road. What had happened? The water plant is doing an investigation to replace their their, uh, pipe. And the driller drilled through the water line. The whole, a different project completely. Another company, another entity and another. So
Okay.
Freshwater.
Yeah, it was, yes.
Thank, thank you. Cause I, I, I drove through this stormwater project and I thought that was the freshwater burst pipe and I'm thinking, whoa, it was so much bigger. So I was driving over the storm drain. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, real quick on the five, on the five-year maintenance plan, like I said, we're, we're finalizing year four. We have done roughly, you know, two million square feet of slurry this year and
What color is year four?
The, what's that? The orange. So
Next year?
The next year is the purple. And we're moving forward on that right now. And that's, that's going forward, sections of that. So that is happening and we talked about and you'll be discussing tonight or approving a contract for the chip seal projects in the city. And that was, like I said, 30th East Danish Road and 7200, which were all part of year four. It's just that they're more heavily traveled roads. So we're using that chip seal. And this is just an idea of some of the areas that got, that received the slurry and the striping. You can see the new surface. It is, it, just as a reminder to folks, the, uh, surface of a slurry gives you about five to eight years more of life. It's kind of one of the reasons you put it in a five-year rotation. If the road is good underneath, this is a great way to keep the road alive for, you know, 25 to 40 years. It just keeps it moving. So this different slurry projects, give you an idea. This is the one you can see where the 5K arrow is here. So I'm not gonna read through all of them, but these were the areas that were, uh, slurry recently. Projects coming up this year, we'll be going out to bid for the Big Cottonwood Trail repairs. Which go from about 2:15 all the way through to the, uh, pond over by the shop. There'll be repairs all along there. There is a wayfinding project that is on there that we received the track funding grant for. That will be going. Once we're completed with the repairs, the wayfinding will go. And there'll be striping on the Big Cottonwood Trail to help folks find parks, locations, distances, all of those things. We'll be starting year five, or we have begun year five of the road maintenance plan. The parking lot for Ferguson Canyon Trail will be, uh, started. Remember that's a federally funded portion. Continue the survey of the stormwater system. We are about little over three quarters done on the survey, the GIS or the GPSing of that. Getting a lot of great information. And we have also, a couple of councils ago, you approved the contract to start raising those manholes. We'll be starting our first manholes on Creek Road. I believe next week, we held the pre-con this week. So we'll be starting that. Once again, the problem on there, getting material. It's concrete is a shortage. So we're taking little chunks at a time that we know we can get put back together pretty quick. And as, once we're finished with that, go back in it, we camera it, we flush it, we figure out what we need to do. So a lot of things happening on the side of the stormwater.
Our required spec level of the manhole is not great. How much do we let them?
It's a quarter inch below lip of asphalt. I'm assuming you have a place that doesn't have that.
No, I like our manhole.
Yeah, it's about a quarter inch below lip of asphalt, the concrete.
Consistent, yeah.
Well, it's supposed to be consistent. Let's put it that way. We follow the APWA spec on that, which was, uh, has that depth. There.
So being in year four of the five-year maintenance plan, when will you start on the?
This winter. Hopefully before you begin your Jan, I believe January, you'll have your retreats and that. We'll have information before that. So when you go in that discussion, the retreats and the budgets, you'll have your five, uh, the next, I don't even, I don't know what to call it anymore. I call it five-year plan, five-year plan point one, point two. I don't know yet. So we'll have that and that'll be coming up here in the next couple of months.
Great.
Matt, I have a quick question. With the, the, uh, cost of oil, when you get a bid, do they hold on to that for that project or how does that work?
They hold it for the project. So they bid and they bid the project, meaning they have access to that oil. They've already bought and paid for it really is what it means. If they don't, they have our contract. I don't recall, Shane might know, we can write it in there, but typically we, we haven't. They have to hold it for 30 days. We, they, it comes back on us to start the project once we bid it. If we don't get everything signed and sealed, they can come back and ask for changes. So it's typically, they'll hold the project if they can get the signed contract because they can go out and buy their bulk at that time.
So it hasn't, hasn't hurt us too bad?
No, we have the, honestly, the oil hasn't, it's kind of interesting. We haven't seen a huge change in oil. The biggest issue on projects is, uh, labor and honestly, material.
Concrete especially.
Yeah, concrete especially. And coming up, we'll see paint is the next thing that's gonna have a problem.
And then Siesta and Cavalero, that little tiny spur that we missed because we thought it was a private road.
It is.
I have to ask that or my neighbors will
It is slated to start, I believe I've put it on the list for this summer to start it. So
Next summer or?
This summer.
Okay, it's summer. No, thank you.
I still have, I, I, I still have till October 1st.
No, thank you.
Yeah, and, but it is on the, it is on this one, the five-year. Any other questions, Mayor, Council?
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate all your work and So before we move on to our legislative items this, this evening, I'm actually, this is not on our agenda. I'm gonna actually add something into what we're going to do. So on Saturday evening, we, we concluded our Butlerville days, which was a, a three-day celebration for our city to come together and, and, and join together in different events. Which is just a huge undertaking. Uh, I was standing with a resident on Saturday evening and just saying, boy, I don't know how long it took to put this all together, but you know, to see a carnival going on with the car show and bounce houses and, and booths and, and food trucks and, and thousands and thousands of, of residents together was, was quite a sight. So what I actually thought we'd do is maybe ask the council for any feedback that you thought you might add from, uh, Butlerville Days.
And, and I, 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 I did request this. I, we do have a wrap-up meeting with the committee. And I figured this was probably the most appropriate time to get rec comments from the council that I could take back. I can assure you, Ann already has some ideas for next year. Already in her head, but it's, it is a lot of work and she puts together and earn almost all year round, but certainly after January. So I'll take pros or cons or comments or
We'd all like, uh, if you could control the weather a little bit better, 15 degrees lower with
That, that, that was always Councilman Anzac's thing and
Well, from the great beyond, couldn't he have stepped in?
As far as the positive, I love the atmosphere there. I think it's, uh, I've been to other cities celebrations and I don't always feel, uh, quite as safe and and it's, it's very organized. I think it was very well thought out, thought out. Um, I love the fireworks. I love the sense of community that it brings. And, uh, I didn't see anything that really, uh, was negative other than the weather that you took, you know, you've made it a little too hot, but but it, it was, it was fantastic. I, I have a lot of positive comments in city residents on, on Butlerville Days.
Councilmember Burrell?
Yes, I had the good fortune of getting to participate in a number of things over Butlerville Days and I want to really commend the historic, uh, committee and the PTO S and all people that were involved in putting together the historic walk. It started here at City Hall. And, uh, when I went Saturday morning, which if you want to avoid the heat, do this, the, um, some of the morning activities, it was so well thought out. It was, uh, just insightful, not only about the history, going back to the pioneers, uh, here of, uh, our immediate Cottonwood Heights area. That was delivered, uh, by, uh, Gail Conger, thank you, Gail Conger. Uh, and then, uh, her, her dynamic duo was Rana Cohen, who then talked about the geology of the Wasatch Range and its history dating back from the mid 1800s on through into the 20th century. So, uh, that was one of the highlights for me. I thought that the parade was so beautiful. I think it's so great how the various cities, uh, participate in each other's parade, bringing such great color and all the beautiful floats. And I really enjoyed all the youth groups, the drill teams and marching bands, uh, that was just electrifying to me. And, uh, so, uh, you know, the parade had a great feeling to it. I also got to go to the carnival with my, I was there with my grandchildren. And so I, I saw it through their eyes and they were so thrilled and, uh, and then of course the music and, and yes, I really commend the staff on how they laid out, uh, all of that complex, all the displays and, and, uh, everything. I got to sit in with the Farm Bureau and learn. I thought I knew more than most people about the life of bees. Uh, my husband has been a beekeeper. But boy, I learned even more. So I love the educational component to the Butlerville Days, uh, as well as all the fun and festivities. And I just hope that like our, uh, pioneers before us, we can even incorporate more about conservation and, uh, build in more of our city's, um, emphasis on sustainability, uh, within, uh, the, the way that we put on our, our parade and various activities. So all in all, A, loved it.
Thank you. Councilmember Newell.
Yeah, I thought it was great. It gave me a great opportunity to spend time with my grandchildren. We spent the longest period of time on Friday there. Uh, it was a little smaller crowd, a little cooler in the evening, which I was rooting for. But I thought that the variety of things to do, the variety of the food trucks is great. The just the interaction of everybody there just being you, you, I don't know what it is, but people get so friendly when you're at an event like that. That is, was really welcoming and I really want to commend the staff for the work that they did on it. It was second to none in my opinion. The, the music, um, I'm kind of a closet Beatles fan, so I'm listening to the Beatles guys in, that was it was hard for my wife to pull me away. But we enjoyed ourselves thoroughly and I could see others enjoying themselves. And I think that's what the important part is. And then that community, that village feeling was, was very, very prominent and I enjoyed seeing that happen.
Thank you, Councilmember Newell. I, I, uh, one of the things that I loved is that we involve some of our great businesses. I know, I think it was Trader Joe's who did a early morning yoga. Uh, I know we had other, other businesses participate and and I, I think that, that, that what Butlerville Days does is it creates a sense of community. And so it, you know, the, the more that we can do as a council to, to create opportunities to create a sense of community for me is a really, really positive thing. I want to thank our, our public safety officials, police and UFA. They were, you know, this is, this is one of the hardest weekends for them. So you know, if you think about it from, uh, you know, Wednesday or Thursday, Friday, and then literally all day Saturday. If you, on Saturday, about anywhere you turned, you saw a police officer. So I think we had almost our entire staff, if I'm not wrong, there. And that is by design. You know, we, you know, that, an event like that does present some dangers. I talked about, I met with that with our chief and assistant police chief. And, uh, and the fact that people are gonna see such a police presence makes, makes for a safer event. And then obviously a- all that UFA did for, you know, I think it's one of the best fireworks shows in, in, in the entire state. And, uh, and, and appreciate your presence. So, uh, to me, there's not a single negative other than, than like we talked about, it was a little bit hot.
Man, I just also add that I thought it made it really fun too, the way the mayor's pickleball tournament, uh, kind of overlapped and brought us right into Butlerville Days. I believe I was, uh, Friday night before the parade, I think it was 11:30 PM that the, the finals were going on with the men's doubles pickleball. So also really high commendation to the, all the folks that put on the, the pickleball, uh, mayor's cup. That was really terrific.
I, I will give, uh, some comments obviously to the, uh, as a member of the first liaison to the Butlerville Days Committee, they always provide a lot of feedback. I know with all the extra police around, Ed, that allows for quicker finding of lost parents, sometimes lost children. But yeah, uh, and their, and their work starts before that. Public Works does a lot of work prior. Um, and I know, um, the youth council was there doing cleanup late Saturday night, almost midnight. Late Saturday night, almost midnight, I believe. And, um, and then those who could go back, they go back on Sunday morning. Rec centers, people, um, whoever can make it over there and sweep field again. Just leftover garbage for whatever reason gets left. We tend to be fairly, you have, the, the, most of the community does a pretty good job of cleaning. Things just get left and, uh, uh, come yesterday, Monday after, after these things, they need to get back to, uh, getting the fields prepped for the football sports and things like that. So, um, but they, uh, uh, overall, um, there'll be a, you know, there'll always be a few things we can look at to improve and, and change. I will say I enjoyed, uh, it was a different parade by not throwing things from the, from the float. Um, my arm didn't get sore. That was a positive. It was downhill when I finally got off and Andy, and that was, that, that was good. So, um, but I will, I will pass these comments along and, uh, and will, and will certainly let me know when we're having a wrap up meeting, but thank you, Mayor.
Ma- Mayor, we also typically will come back in a work session and we'll schedule a time when Ann's back after the after the Butler, Butler's, Butlerville Day Committee meets and um, let you know kind of where we are as, as regarding the budget and all aspects of that. I do know that there's some really positive reports on the budget, um, that was received right after the meeting, especially related to the carnival. So we'll bring all of that back to you as well.
The only sad thing I saw is I was with the mayor and he went to go to get in line to get his iceberg shake and he came back about half an hour later with a tear rolling down his cheeks. He couldn't get in. There was too many people in front of him, but other than that, it was a complete success.
Yes. Well, if there, if there's something maybe I could add is, uh, I did have some residents say, oh, I didn't know Butlerville days was going on. And, and so if you're not on social media, I wonder if there's some ways that we, maybe we could think out, think about getting the word out to those that aren't on social media. Maybe and yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, we, well, beyond social media, we have it on billboards significantly. Um, we really try to reach out in as many ways as we can, especially those billboards. They were up very often.
Oh, I didn't even see that. Where were the billboards?
Um, the one on Highland.
Electronic one?
Yeah, the electronic one. We had and banners. So anyway, we definitely would like additional suggestions, but we really true, truly try to do more. Yeah.
And our newsletter, I, I had some neighbors say, now why were they having fireworks? And I said, that you must have missed, missed about twenty different types of media to tell them about it. Because it was, the twenty-fourth was on a Monday.
I, I, I got a number of comments that, well, why aren't you doing it on the twenty-fourth like you always used to? And I um, and the, and the, the answer there was, uh, the carnivals like to be scheduled a number of and the way their scheduling typically works is they would prefer that you have a, like a second or a third weekend or a fourth weekend of the month. So that they can work all of their other things in as well. And so the decision was made to move it to the weekend. Um, they wanted the three days. This was the first year we did this. That, I think that that worked well. Um, hopefully it wasn't too much of a disturbance to the neighbors, but uh, that's, that's why it will kind of dictate where it's going, but it will always be a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, at least for the foreseeable. That helps the, uh, the, the rec center, um, I think public works, even the public safety, when the set up on this day, we do this on this day and then I'm going to ask Tim what that really good news was later. Hopefully he'll tell me.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that from the council. So next, the next item on our agenda this evening is, is, uh, two legislative items, beginning with uh, consideration of ordinance three eighty-six, approving an amended compensation schedule for the city's elected and appointed officers. Is there any other questions or comments from the council at this time?
I would just like to make the quick comment that, uh, again, uh, the reason why I, uh, was favorable when this idea was presented to have higher compensation levels is so that we can hopefully cultivate over time uh, younger people, uh, here on the city council, uh, and then that's in no, uh, and not, nothing derogatory toward any of those that are serving currently. Uh, but for a lot of people, uh, without a little higher level of compensation, they really can't work it into their lifestyles uh, to run for a public office. And, uh, so that's why I am supporting, uh, this measure. Uh, hoping that we have, are infused by, uh, people of, of younger generations, uh, as well as the mature sophisticated council we have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance three eighty-six.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number three eighty-six.
I'll second that, Mayor.
A motion to approve from Councilmember Newell and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Any other final questions or comments? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Newell.
Yes.
Councilmember Burrell.
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
I, I think Mayor, you need to be, um, uh, near sixty or in, in your fifties, you're probably just
I am the youth on this council. I'll let, I'll, I will say that again. Okay, uh, our next item is a consideration of resolution two thousand twenty-two dash forty-one, accepting a bid and approving entry into a construction contract with the Advanced Paving and Construction LLC for the two thousand twenty-two citywide chip seal project. So we, uh, did discuss this item earlier in our work session. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? I will now entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-one.
I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-one.
Second.
Motion to approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-one from Councilmember Peterson and a second from Councilmember Newell. Final questions, comments? Uh, hearing none, I will now call for the vote. Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Newell.
Yes.
Councilmember Burrell.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
I will vote yes. Okay. Well, the last item for us this evening is approval of the consent calendar, which is the minutes from our meetings on, on July nineteenth. Got to get a motion to approve these minutes.
Move that we approve.
And I'll second that.
Approve from Councilmember Ruck and a second from Councilmember Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That concludes our, our meeting this evening. Um, could I get a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We adjourned.